Making appropriations, determining levy and categorizing the annual ad valorem property tax levy for the City of Eugene for the fiscal -- for the -- oops. Really? Is it -- it's not on? It is on. I can hear it. Okay. City Manager, would you introduce the topic, please?
Yes, ma'am. And I'll just give a couple sentences, and this will be for all of -- all four of the budget public hearings. This public hearing is to provide the council with an opportunity to hear from the public on the FY 11 proposed budget as considered by the Budget Committee and the FY 10 supplemental budgets for the City and Urban Renewal Agency. No action is required at this time. Action and deliberation will take place next Monday, June 28.
Thank you, City Manager. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and we have one person who signed up to speak on this topic, and he knows -- he's filled out a request-to-speak form, and he knows about the time and all of the things that are required. John Borowski.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on the FY 2011 City of Eugene budget. This year's budget process has had its struggles as well as positive outcomes. I would like to thank the whole Budget Committee and staff for all the hard work involved in coming up with the proposed budget that is before council for approval. The City Manager and his team have done an admirable job in presenting a budget that puts the city on a road to a truly sustainable budget in years going forward. As the Chairperson of the Budget Committee, I was very pleased with the openness and amount of communication that the Manager and staff brought to the process, which helped me and many others on the committee make informed decisions. This year's process, however, did, in my opinion, have some areas of concern to me as a committee member. The fact that the City Manager brought forward cost savings proposals that, in staff's opinion, were worthy of consideration of cuts, i.e., the reduction of hours of the aquatics facility and cuts to some park programs, I felt that the amount of time spent on those issues for rather small amounts, $8,000 and $30,000 respectively, while very informative, may have taken committee time away from other larger issues. If going forward, the City Manager wants input on such small line items as these, then the budget process will get bogged down. In a year when expenditures and reductions in the millions of dollars were taken for granted, yet hours of time was spent on small items does not seem like an efficient use of the committee's time. With that being said, I'm glad that both programs were able to be funded. This year's process did have some very positive outcomes. As I said, I feel that we are on our way to a sustainable budget. There was creative thinking that will allow the development of a much-needed neighborhood park in north Eugene. Also, for the first time since I've been involved in the budget process, this park has funding associated with the ongoing maintenance of the park to go with its development. We were also able to help supplement the Human Services Commission's good work and allocate some one-time dollars to help fix our roads, a constant need. We also struggled with the issue of animal control and were able to make prudent choices in that regard. In closing, I would like to recommend the passage of the FY 2011 budget and thank all the people who helped develop it. I would especially like to thank the many people who either testified or communicated to the subcommittee by electronically or mail. Your input was helpful and appreciated. Thank you, John Borowski.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm just going to say, I know you've heard it before, John, but I'm going to say it on the part of all of us, thank you for your able leadership for our Budget Committee. It's not an easy job, and it was not an easy thing to deal with this year, and we really appreciate the work that went into it. So thank you very, very much. Are there any other comments by the council? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next public hearing, which is a resolution of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Eugene. And I have to close the City Council meeting and open the Urban Renewal District meeting. And I do not see -- no, we have no one signed up, so I'm going to close the hearing and ask if there are any comments from council. Seeing none, business is done. We'll go on to the third public hearing with a resolution adopting a supplemental budget. Oh, right. Thank you. Close the urban renewal and open the City Council meeting. Thank you. And this is item number three, so we do have -- okay. So, City Manager, will you open the topic, please? This is number three.
Mayor, I'll just kind of use the same information from before. This is just a public hearing to provide the council with an opportunity to hear from the public on the FY 10 supplemental budgets for the City and Urban Renewal Agency. Again, no actions required at this time, and action and deliberation will take place next Monday, June 28.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to open the public hearing. And again, we have John Borowski, who's going to speak to us, and he knows the drill.
Good evening, John Borowski, 2010 Hubbard Lane, Ward 3. Madam Mayor, Council, the supplemental budget that was put before you, I haven't had much time to look over it. It was made available to me on Friday by email, so it was kind of a short window turnaround. There was one item that was, I thought, that warranted at least a pair -- a set of eyes to look at. In the Risk and Benefit Fund, there is a change in the budget that reduces the balance available by $1 million and increases the operating budget appropriation in the Central Services Department by that same amount to cover an increased health insurance claim due to adverse claims experience. And when I saw that, it kind of shot up some things that I had questions to add, and I'm sure that staff can answer them. But I know that when we adopted the FY 10 budget, one of the cost-cutting strategies put forward by the mayor -- or, excuse me, by the City Manager was reducing the estimate of risk claims expenses, which saved us $473,000. But what I was concerned about is if basically lowering our deductible and saving $473,000 ended up costing us $1 million in higher claims. And then there was one other part of that factor that was put in as a cost-saving thing in the Health Department or Health Benefits Department. And that was in the document from last year, it said, "The city's downtown wellness center opened in FY 09 and is being actively used to promote and improve the health and fitness of employees to help reduce the claims and costs." And I know that that was a fairly significant expenditure, and yet we're seeing higher and higher claims. So I'm not sure what the answers to this are, but when I see a supplemental budget that has an allocation shifted towards increased healthcare costs of $1 million, and we've lowered our deductibles and done things to try and bring our healthcare costs down, I just need to have those answers addressed before this would be -- or at least brought to light before this is moved to adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm actually going to ask the City Manager if there are some comments to address the issues that were brought forward by Mr. Borowski.
I would ask either -- Murnee, would you like to come up and address those, please?
Hello. I'm Murnee Dow, Risk and Benefits Manager in the Central Services Department. And the explanation for the large move in the dollars, the $1 million move from balance available to the claims line item in the Employee Health Fund is because we had some extraordinarily large claims this year. We had the largest claim that we have ever had, $600,000. And we had, including that claim, 11 claims over $100,000. So the city is self-insured for the first $150,000 of every claim, but we have to pay the full amount of all the claims and then be reimbursed by our stop-loss insurance carrier. So we will be reimbursed for most of our large claims, but we, in order to make sure that we would have enough money in our claims line item, we decided to go ahead and submit this supplemental budget. We also had to submit this early on as a staff person. I had to put in my request by May 1st, when we weren't sure what the resolution of these large claims would be. And we, you know, so we just didn't know if they would be resolved, if they would be ongoing or not. But it doesn't reflect an overall increase in our program. It's just these large claims that, for the most part, will be reimbursed by our stop-loss carrier.
Thank you for that explanation. And do you have any comments you want to make about the cost-effectiveness of the fitness center?
Well, I can say that we have increased utilization over time. More and more employees are using the fitness center, and we know we have -- we feature Employee of the Month, who volunteers to let their story be told in our health and fitness newsletter. And there are many employees who are using the center who were not regular exercisers, who didn't belong to any other fitness facility, and this is really offering them an opportunity to lose weight, get fit, meet their goals. So we believe that it is filling an important need for our employees.
Thank you for that. So I'm going to ask the City Council if there are any other comments or questions. Seeing none, I'm going to -- thank you, Murnee. We're done. Thanks. I'm going to close the City Council meeting and open the Urban Renewal Agency, and we're having a public hearing resolution adopting supplemental budget. No one in the queue? Yes? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mary Salinas is speaking on this topic.
Hi. I'm speaking to you about your urban renewal budget. I did not receive a copy of it, so I'm not exactly sure what you've decided.
It's about the supplemental budget that we just talked about.
Yes, dear. I don't think there's any time that's inappropriate to speak about the homeless. Yeah, I'm getting -- I'm losing my patience. The homeless are very sick, scared, and they're dying. And I guess I'd speak to one thing right now, and that's the Egan Warming Center. I don't know if you've given much money to the homeless in this budget, but if you haven't, you can always start thinking about next year's budget. And the Egan Warming Center doesn't open until 28 degrees, which means that's below freezing, and you have hundreds of homeless children downtown. And though you don't seem to care much for the older people, I would really like to ask you to give more money to the Egan Warming Center this year or next year, whatever budget you want to do it in, and bring us in before we freeze. I don't know where you came up with 28 degrees to help us, but it's not Christian, it's not neighborly, it's not nice. Please bring us in. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask council if there are any questions or issues. Seeing none, I'm going to close the Urban Renewal District Agency, and I'm going to open the City Council meeting again. And we have item number five, which is public hearing on an ordinance concerning the Walnut Station Mixed-Use Center. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is to consider an ordinance which will implement the Walnut Station Mixed-Use Center project. The goal of this project is to facilitate redevelopment of the area around Franklin Boulevard adjacent to the University of Oregon. Council is scheduled to deliberate and take action at the July 26 work session, and staff is here for questions, if you have any.
Thank you very much. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and those wishing to speak during the public hearing must submit a completed request-to-speak form to the Information Desk prior to the beginning of the public hearing. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward, if known. You will have three minutes to comment. There are lights on the podium. The yellow light indicates you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of those three minutes. We have 15 people signed up. The first person is Bruce Mulligan, followed by Elizabeth Stephenson.
My name is Bruce Mulligan. I reside at 3056 Hendricks Hill Drive, which I got this tag from the Fairmont neighbors. I actually am in the Laurel Valley Neighbors Association. But I started on this long journey in 2006 with a group of Fairmont neighbors when we were looking at the arena project and some of their concerns about what was happening around the arena. In 2006, they were looking at things that could address some of those concerns and began looking at form-based codes. And about that time, I also began discussions with the Chamber. I serve on the Chamber's Local Government Advisory Committee, and am currently Chair of the Local Government Advisory Committee. And some of the concerns of the Fairmont neighbors were surrounding the university and what the university's plans were, and some of the exciting opportunities that we were looking at around this Walnut Station. And one of the things I'd like to stress with you, and I'm not going to read what I've given you in terms of written testimony, is that we've been at this now for several years, and I think the Chamber has stepped up and was active in getting the university to join us, join with the Fairmont neighbors around a table, and sit down and begin to address through the offices of the city, and coming up with an innovative approach at resolving disputes before they arise, and coming up with some solutions in the form of a form-based code to describe a vision of what it could look like around this exciting new district for this city. And resolving these disputes, I think we've come up with solutions that are not perfect. A lot of compromises were made. Some things that the Chamber and the businesses were not necessarily entirely satisfied with, but would work, frankly, were some height limitations were agreed to, some setbacks and step backs that were needed for the neighborhood to thrive and continue to exist as a viable neighborhood. There are some areas that are still giving some of the businesses a little bit of heartburn, but we will hopefully resolve those along with the multi-way Boulevard concept. Some of the access restrictions have some concern for some of the businesses. But by and large, we support this form-based code as a way to resolve these disputes and to create a viable streamlined approach for businesses within this area to thrive and develop a neighborhood that's walkable, that is someplace that you'd want to do business in, someplace that you'd want to live, someplace that we want to build a community that is truly a gateway for this community. And moreover, is an example of what we can do if we all sit down around a table and resolve our differences in advance and create in advance the kind of community that we all think we can live and work in. This is an ideal model, we think, for the future, and we just urge your support and recognize the amount of time and energy that we all have spent around a table for months and months and months in bringing this to the point it is at today. So I thank you for your attention and time, and I'll let others speak to the amount of energy they've invested. Thank you.
Elizabeth Stephenson is next, followed by what looks like Rena Cohen or Cohen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've lived in our area since 1960, and I've lived on Skyline Boulevard for 23 years. So I'm a member of the Fairmont Neighbors Association. We wholeheartedly endorse the recommendation for the Planning Commission that after 50,000 square feet of development or three years, the form-based code be evaluated to ensure that this process, which is new to our community, is achieving what we set out to accomplish. Impacts to our neighborhood, such as the cut-through traffic and parking, we can then inform the Planning Commission and the City Council, yourselves, about what kind of adaptive management might be needed to occur through either the changes in the plan or the code or supplemental action which the city might take through your efforts. The FNA expects any evaluation, which is done in collaboration with all of the stakeholders, including Fairmont Neighbors Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rena Cohen, followed by Jeff Nelson.
Yes, I'm Rena Cohen, and although I live in Pleasant Hill, I own the building at 1432 Orchard Street, so I'm very much impacted by these changes. That big apartment building that's going in right to the north of me is the first harbinger of things to come, apparently, because they have plans to build similar buildings to the west of me and to the south of me. And the sad thing is, you know, at the beginning, when all this was initially thrown around as ideas, back when it was being called the node, and then it kind of went through various transformations, I was in favor of it in the general concept. But I was also told that my business was valuable to the community and to the neighborhood, and nobody wanted to impact my business negatively. Well, the reality is, my business is going to get squeezed out by this. We rent parking spaces for our employees from the property to the west of us. If they build an enormous building over there, there won't be 15 spaces. People don't realize how many employees it takes to run a business like mine. I have 17 employees, not to mention my customers, and there's four apartment buildings at the top of the building, which all these people need places to park. The parking is going to be the issue. Allowing high-density residential without requiring parking, I think, is foolish, because I've heard the concept that, well, if you don't have parking, then people just won't have cars. I think that's silly. That's never been borne out anywhere around here. This is Oregon, you know. It rains. You need a car to get anyplace. The bus is lovely, but it doesn't fit most people's schedules, or at least certainly not my schedule, or most of my employees. So all that's great. I like the idea of a neighborhood where you can live and you can work and you can play and you can walk, but it doesn't solve the problem of how clients get to my business. They need to come in their cars with their sick animals. There are a few people who can walk down the street, but most of the people come in their cars. And the other issue that I have going on here is that this, the multi-way Boulevard concept for Franklin Boulevard, I think, is poorly thought out. It's a major arterial, if you're coming from the south or from Springfield, other than if you go north. It's the arterial to get to that area. And to change the lane designation so that there's fewer through lanes, and then you add a slow lane and a parking lane, just seems crazy. It's an enormous expense, and I don't think it's going to accomplish what it's supposed to accomplish. And I just can't imagine spending millions and millions and millions of dollars to do something like this, and then later going, oh, well, that was a mistake. Let's change all that back. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Nelson is next, followed by Don Philpott.
My name is Jeff Nelson. My family lives at 2144 East 15th Avenue, and I'm in Allen's and Linkus Ward. So my property lives right across the street from the Oregon -- University of Oregon properties that are controlled by them, the former ODOT property and the former Romania property. And just for background, I'm the former co-chair of the Fairmont Neighbors Association, former chair of the East Campus Committee, where the university owns 30 acres of property. No one appealed that process, which I'm happy about. I'm also the current chair of the Arena Committee, so that's been an ongoing responsibility. In 2005, I introduced the first resolution before the Fairmont Neighbors Association to support mixed-use centers. That was adopted, and we've had evolving conversations since then. So I'd maybe first like to start by requesting the record remain open for 10 days, so that people can have an opportunity to respond to some of the testimony and filings that were submitted on Friday. And I'd also like to say that I'm here on behalf of my son, who's eight, and my daughter, who's four, going on 13. My kids love playing in the park, and they want to have a safe environment to play, and I want a safe environment for them. So there's some issues that I appreciate the staff addressing. One is the difference between adjacent versus abutting. Terminology in the code, I would appreciate clarification on. And I would like the legislative intent to reflect that adjacent includes property across a right-of-way or easement, not just right next to a property. It should reflect mitigating impacts across the street. And I'd like to point out that the proposal expands the list of outright permitted uses. So there's a number of uses that currently require site review or conditionally-used permit process, and those would be outright permitted. And what that really does is shift the mitigation responsibility from developers who may mitigate a process through site review or conditionally-use and push that mitigation onto the council. So I want to make sure that the council, as you consider adoption of this mixed-use center, the city is now taking responsibility, more proactive responsibility, for mitigation of impacts to the neighborhood. So there are two paths for the code. One is the form-based code, where the developer can follow the prescriptive path, and the other path is a design review. If a parking lot were to be developed, a surface parking lot, there's no policies to reflect mitigating the impacts of traffic and parking. So the staff had originally proposed that surface parking lots be subject to design review, and I don't know why that's not in the current proposal. So I'd like to know why that is not part of a design review and ask it be reconsidered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Don Philpott, followed by Jared Mason-Gear.
Hi. My name is Don Philpott. I live at 1568 Orchard Street. It's four doors from 15th Street in Eugene, Oregon. And my main concern, I've not been part of any of the planning, I haven't been a part of the arena or any of this kind of processing, but I've reviewed the document that was submitted by planners here, and my main concern is the transition on 15th Street between the higher density to the residential area. And the transition from north to south has some major problems, I think, in the sense that it's more responsive to the higher density rather than the existing residential area. As an example, the setbacks on the north side, which would be the form-based code buildings, I realize that you can't build tall buildings now, but the setbacks are not residential in scale, which is right across the street on 15th Street. And so I would suppose, I would support having setbacks a little bit further, maybe the building heights remain the same and the setbacks within the building module remain the same, but more of a setback is responsive to the neighborhood scale. And the lighting standards, I've mentioned this in the Planning Commission meeting, and I didn't see anything that was addressing that in this latest model of the planning or whatever this document that we have laid at the latest. The lighting standards are for a medium ambient light, which is basically a standard that's way too much more than a residential area standard of lighting. And so you go on one side of the street, a residential standard of lighting; on the other side, you have more of a commercial standard of lighting. It doesn't seem, that transition seems to be too abrupt. The transition should be part of the new development rather than into the neighborhood. It should work from 15th Street north as more of a transition. And so by contrast, I think you need to better compromise with the lighting to lower the ambient light, to be more responsive to the neighborhood. And then the signage standards are really, they're office standards signage for north of 15th, on the north side of 15th, residential on the south side. I didn't bring my notes, but some of the things you can put up are reader boards, some other kind of signage that I'm not familiar with, but it has a two-faced sign that you can put on the north side of the streets that is basically a sheet of plywood in size facing both ways. That's a huge impact on a residential to a higher-density use, such as the nodal thing is doing. So those are, and then Rena's addressed the parking component of that. Parking has basically been overlooked as some kind of a 10 seconds, as something that's just not to be desired. Well, the reality is, is that there's businesses that need to be supported by parking, and the residences are going to be impacted by the lack of parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Mason-Gear is next, followed by Suzie Smith.
Evening, Mayor Piercy, Councilors. Jared Mason-Gear, on behalf of the Eugene Chamber of Commerce, 1401 Willamette Street, Eugene 97401. I've submitted some written testimony, so I'll just make some outlining remarks briefly. First, to commend staff and the process overall. Mayor Piercy, you singled out the
I've submitted some written testimony, so I'll just make some outlining remarks briefly. First, to commend staff and the process overall. Mayor Piercy, you singled out the Walnut Station stakeholders at your State of the City address, and I think rightly so. For the work that the group is able to do to bring home some divergent points of views and really work through this process in a collaborative way, we brought the city, the University of Oregon, the Walnut Neighbors, and the Chamber of Commerce together, and I think developed a plan that will be beneficial to all concerned, and certainly to our community over the long term. So, specifically, the Walnut Station code, I think, brings a number of advantages to our community. One is that it helps foster the kinds of walkable, vibrant, diverse, dense, and rapid-transit based neighborhoods that are, I think, strongly supported throughout our community. And also, very importantly to us, will facilitate a more streamlined, uniform, and certain process for those looking to build in this community. I think you hear over and over again that one of the great impediments to construction in Eugene is that the code is very dense and can be difficult to navigate. We think that a form-based code, both in Walnut Station and at various points throughout the community, would be a huge advantage in helping developers know what they're getting into and streamlining that process, so that it can happen more quickly, reducing costs, and making it easier for people to get into a building. There are a few shortfalls, I think, in the proposal this before you. The first is that there was a last-minute change to the recommendation as pertains to planning director's appeals. So, those decisions will be considered, at this point, as the code stands now, by the Planning Commission rather than the hearings official. That was something that was added by the Planning Commission before they made this recommendation. We believe that there would be a great deal more uniformity and certainty if it were to go to somebody who is well-versed in the rule of law and Andrew's Code, like a hearing official versus a board made up of political appointees, such as a planning commission. We're also concerned about the potential negative impacts on existing property owners, businesses in the University of Oregon on the south side of Franklin Boulevard, by the threat of special setbacks in which the city would take property, essentially by withholding it and making so you can't build without compensating property owners for Hopefully, you can take steps to mitigate those, and hopefully you can add back the appropriate appeals process, and then move forward as quickly as you can to implement not only the Walnut Station code, but begin looking at form-based code in other places in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Susie Smith is next, followed by Josh Record.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Susie Smith. I live at 1659 Orchard, which I think is in Ward Three, and I hope I got it right.
It better be.
We have a plan. I'm the first in a series of speakers tonight that are representing the Walnut Mixed-Use Subcommittee of the Fairmount Neighborhood Association. I want to start by saying, it's been a very long haul. Some of you saw these posted prolifically around our neighborhood, and I can't remember the date. Lydia tells me it was 2003. It seems like it might have been earlier than that, but I can tell you, there aren't that many people in the room who have been involved in this as long as, there's a few of us. It's been a long haul, starting with a pretty sour note, and ending with what I think is an incredible product of collaboration on the part of the city, the U of O, the Chamber, and the Neighborhood Association. It's taken quite some time to get there, but the spirit has been great, and we're at a place, I think, subsequent to the Planning Commission public hearing and the work even that's transpired since the planning reviewed this draft plan. It's getting better and better and better, and I think, I hope by July 26th, it'll be really good. So, you can see a sea of these out there, and this is our version of hope for the future. It says, "We heart the Fairmount Neighbors forever. Fairmount Neighbors for a bright future." And I think that is reflective of our investment, that it's not perfect, we know it has problems. You've heard about some of the potential pitfalls earlier tonight, traffic, parking, list of uses, but we think that we've gone a long way with this plan to forge the kinds of treatments of the edges between the Walnut Mixed-Use Center and our neighborhood, and follow-up work to help us assess and understand the future impacts of traffic circulation and parking and uses, that we have a process put in place that will be able to address them. So, I want to really thank, and I think the Fairmount Neighbors want to really thank Lydia McKenney. She's been incredible project manager on this project, and I don't think that we would be where we are today without her, just her energy, her ability to forge consensus through collaboration. So, we see many great things of potential in this plan. The multi-way boulevard has the potential, the prospect, to be a beautiful entry to our neighborhood. The bike pedestrian, you're kidding.
That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for playing, ladies.
Next is Josh Record, followed by David Sonnixon.
Good evening. Susie reviewed the last four or five years. I would like to talk about the future. My name is Josh Record. I reside at 1575 Fairmont Boulevard, which is 65 feet from the Walnut Node. I would like to speak to, about the creation of the expectation of graceful transitions from mixed-use to single-family homes. My vantage is that of a homeowner, and the term of graceful transition is not mine, but found in the Walnut Specific Area Plan, June 2010. One cannot assert grace if only demonstrate it. The image of one has of graceful transition is one that is both pleasing and satisfying to those that participate, as well as those that view it in the broader Eugene community. And this is important not only for the outcome of the Walnut Node, or the Walnut Mixed-Use Center, but also the assumptions and inferences that others draw as the city moves forward on other similar projects. To that end, I would like to offer the following observations and suggestions. The energy and activities that are described in the development of the proposal will need to be continued. The difficulties of creating contain, continuing shared narratives and understanding that match what is said and what is done will be demanding. To this end, there must be a willingness on the part of the city to invest ongoing resources of time, funds, and training to this process, to sustain it. In the face of not knowing, we typically move to the safety of our certainties, and these become roadblocks to finding useful solutions. The form-based code offers, but requires, a willingness to produce emergent solutions. How we transition from proposal to implementation as we go forward on the approval of this will be based on addressing practical issues such as parking, traffic, scale of buildings, agreements and understandings about particular parcels, such as what is happening between Walnut and Orchard on 15th, on both sides of the street. How this occurs will set the stage as we move forward. I would strongly suggest that the resources are used to assess not only the products that we do, but the processes that we are building, as they occur and create a structure for ongoing review. Many of us find the planning process often seemingly dry and technical, filled with setback requirements and traffic usage data. But at its heart, it is a human experience that requires the skills of communication, process tools, as well as the willingness to take part by all the participants. For my vantage as a homeowner, I would hope we are all willing to expend the resources, have the patience, take the time, to allow the described graceful transition to occur. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. David Sonnixon is next, followed by Camilla Bayless.
Hi, I'm David Sonnixon. I've lived since 1977 in the Fairmount neighborhood, with time off to live in Washington, D.C. And I live in Ward Three, and that's also known as Ward Z. And I'm here speaking in favor of the multi-way boulevard, the inclusion of which is vital to FNA support of the Walnut Station Mixed-Use Center. Without it, the association's perspective would not regard the plan as serving to enhance our neighborhood. A smooth flow of motorized vehicles utilizing a new Franklin Boulevard, redesigned in a sophisticated alignment friendly to both local and passing-through users, augmented by mass transit, will facilitate a uniting of parts of our neighborhood now divided by Franklin Boulevard. Much of this knitting would happen using non-motorized means, pedestrian and bicycle usage. I walk or cycle across Franklin, or travel on it by car or MX virtually every day. The multi-way boulevard would make crossing Franklin on foot or by bike much more inviting, promoting access to underutilized and underappreciated amenities like the Millrace Riparian Corridor and the Willamette River, both of which would remain significant due to human-scale step-down form-based height limits that this plan has drawn into it. So, again, the multi-way boulevard is key to the Walnut Station Mixed-Use Center concept. We feel it enables better access across and within our historic part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Camilla Bayless is next, followed by Mary Ann Holzer. It's the same way it always is, so I don't know.
My name is Camilla Bayless. I live at 1621 Orchard Street, and I'm in Allen Zelenka's Ward. I've lived in my home for 38 years, and I'm here to speak to the parking impacts and the need for both the parking policies that have recently been recommended by staff. I've personally witnessed the growth in parking problems, as university enrollment has increased over time, along with increased development and density in the neighborhood. Both the East Campus planning efforts and the Fairmount Neighborhood Special Area Study have recognized parking problems, and the neighborhood has taken advantage of existing city parking programs. Through the Arena Conditional Use Permit and MOU process, the neighborhood succeeded in gaining recognition and treatment of negative spillover and event parking problems in the neighborhood. For example, high-volume parking demand during events such as track meets and football games has resulted in damaged vehicles, blocked access to driveways, and inability of residents to park near their homes. As a personal example, during track meets and football game days, I am unable to entertain because my guests can't find a place to park. The Walnut Mixed-Use Plan includes a reduction in the required amount of off-street parking to be provided by new developments. No study or analysis was conducted, no provisions were made to address the impact of this policy recommendation on the neighborhood, except that the plan acknowledges and makes a continuing commitment to ensure that the arena parking district remains in place. While the arena parking district is not a panacea, an enforcement of parking limitations does not extend into the night, at which time, people living in these dense residential developments above the commercial ground floors are going to have to have a place to park their vehicles. For example, the new courtside apartments going up on Orchard Street have four floors of student apartments, and very limited paid parking underneath the building. Where in the world are all those students going to put their cars? Use of our neighborhood as overnight storage for vehicles owned by residents in the mixed-use area is totally unacceptable. So, two things need to happen. First, we need a study to evaluate whether supplemental parking program measures are needed beyond the arena parking district. Then, after some of the development has occurred, there needs to be a reevaluation to determine whether additional steps need to be taken to address parking. Both of these have been recommended by staff, and the Fairmount Neighborhood Association supports those supplemental recommendations. Thank you.
Next is Mary Ann Holzer, followed by Sue Jacobowski.
Hi, Mary Ann Holzer, living at 2620 Cresta de Ruda. I've been resident and Fairmount neighbor for 42 years, and I worked on the original special area plan for East Campus, and I am on the Subcommittee of the Walnut Mixed-Use Group of the Fairmount Neighbors. As a former U of O grad, teaching fellow, professor, and resident, I care deeply about the neighborhood within and without planning boundaries. We need, as others have said, careful review and insight, particularly as to structures, design, placement, height, and actual use. The height seems to have changed from our original plans. Without such review, the flexible form design may not result in the vision that we have for a friendly, local, and nearby, with nearby residential shopping, commercial, and academic activities. Others have talked about parking and other uses, but I will focus on the university. We need the university to define the uses on their public land. Examples are the Living Learning Center, which is adorned with classes within, university group residences, student group offices, treatment centers, U of O institutes, research centers, and administration can bring auto traffic as well as anticipated pedestrian. And arena parking, as mentioned, may bring customers positively to the commercial activities, but will again affect parking. Years of local observation, after years of local observation, I note that people will try to park anywhere, either to avoid fines or to find someplace to park when they want to attend an event. It happens every time there is one. The present mitigated arena parking may not be inadequate, may not be adequate. The Fairmount Neighbors had to appeal to have the university area defined as a special use, and the arena meet conditional use requirements. We request that importantly, the university needs to specifically define specific uses on public land. These uses can cause problems for adjacent neighbors. U of O needs to better define which uses will be permitted outright, require conditional use permits, or are prohibited altogether due to their incompatibility with the neighborhood. Without such negative definitions, there can be negative effects on the mixed-use vision. The Planning Commission and the Fairmount Neighbors support a specific project to evaluate the list of university uses. The Fairmount Neighbors request that the council staff complete this evaluation with one year, and I appreciate all the work that the staff, Cynthia McKenney, and others, volunteers from the neighborhood have done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a written, a little bit more detailed written statement for you.
Okay. Sue, you're next. Sue Jacobowski, followed by Mary Ann Walter.
Hello, I'm Sue Jacobowski, and I live at 2018 Orchard Street, which is in Ward Three. I've lived there for 22 years, which doesn't seem like a very long time compared to some of my neighbors. I speak from three different perspectives, so to speak, as an owner, of course, and living in the neighborhood that I dearly love, and you'll get me out of there probably in a pine box. Also, as past co-chair and member of the Fairmount Board currently, and then also, maybe a rather unique perspective, as my profession is a real estate agent. Just speaking as a neighbor and member of the association board, I just want to commend everyone that has put in so much effort for so many years. This is a long-term effort and commitment on behalf of the city, and the neighbors, and the staff, and stakeholders, and we may not have anything that's totally perfect here, but we have something that's getting, as Susie said, better and better, and I hope we honor all that commitment going forward. I would speak briefly to property values and protecting the neighborhood, because that's what I know the most professionally. I can tell you that it's still a very desirable neighborhood, always has been, one of the most desirable in the city. People want to live there. I can also tell you that with all of the things going on in our neighborhood, and we seem to be sort of ground zero for a lot of things lately, that a lot of people have expressed concern that the neighborhood expressed concern that the neighborhood maintain its value, its amenities, that it continue to be the place that we all love to live in, and I think with this plan moving forward that will help us to maintain our neighborhood. That's been our goal, and we are vigilant in maintaining that. Right now, we are lucky, one of our neighborhoods, one of the neighborhoods that's holding values, and people still want to live there. And with all this effort, hopefully, we will continue to maintain that into the future. It's a great neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ann Walter is next, followed by John Varofsky, third time up.
I'm Mary Ann Walter, and I live at 1846 Orchard Street, and I've lived there nearly 30 years. I urge you to consider pedestrian safely, very, very seriously. Even now, without any increase in traffic, and you know there will be, it is exceedingly dangerous and unpleasant to cross various streets, especially at Orchard and Franklin. I, and I'm sure others, don't want to be the first ones to be killed. Thank you.
Thank you. John Varofsky, and last one up is Al Cooper.
I'm starting to feel like Zack. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thanks for allowing me to testify in regards to the Walnut Mixed-Use Area. As you have heard from some of my neighbors with all the nice pins, much work has been done by countless number of people to get where we are now. As a resident and business owner in the Fairmount neighborhood, I feel that the steps that have been taken to date have been very positive. I think that all stakeholders came to the table with a goal to help develop a vital and viable mixed-use centers. As neighbors, we are aware that the development community plays a critical role in how or whether the area ultimately develops over time. We feel that the plan fits the needs of the stakeholders, albeit none of the groups got all they wanted, however, the collaboration worked well. The neighborhood believes that the recommendations made by staff in your packets in regards to updating the traffic study, as well as the impacts of parking the neighborhood, are very important. We feel that they are important to our neighborhood's livability. I, however, see them as even more important to the city as a whole. As you know, this will be the first mixed-use center that you, as a council, will be adopting. And there are many more of this types of developments on the table in every part of town: downtown, Whittaker, Willow Creek, Royal, Sheldon Plaza, Chase Gardens, Willamette, Churchill, just to name a few. As these areas move along in the planning process, it will be very important to have as much information on how the plans will impact the surrounding neighborhoods and the best way to deal with those impacts. These studies will be valuable tools in assigning the impacts and finding ways to mitigate them to help maintain the livability of all the city's neighborhoods. As you know, studies of this type require resources, so I'm asking you to direct the city manager to make sure that funding is in place to complete the studies. If I were a person that was familiar with the budgeting process, I would look at the possibility of some one-time funding that may become available to the city through perhaps an upcoming vacation of property in the area of the Walnut Mixed-Use Center that may have an impact on parking, traffic to the neighborhood, and use the monies that are received to fund these studies. We appreciate staff's hard work and continued commitment to working with the neighborhood, university, and the Chamber of Commerce to achieve a viable mixed-use center. The neighbors feel it is very important that the council incorporate the recommendations provided by staff tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Last person up, Al Cooper.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilors, and staff. I'm Al Cooper, 2258 Harris Street in Commissioner Counselor Zelenka's Ward. I'm here to support the matters before you, and would like to make three points. The first is that it doesn't take much research of the literature to realize that form-based codes are well past the experimental phase. At the last count, there were almost 300 of them in the US that are either adopted or being crafted. My second point is, and this comes from about 40 years of experience as a planning director in a couple of Oregon jurisdictions, and 27 years as a land use attorney, I have never seen a more open collaborative process than the one you've conducted here. Everyone who has an interest in this has had ample opportunity to participate. My last point is that the frequent generic complaint about form-based codes is that because they emphasize use rather, pardon me, form rather than use, there can be a lack of due process. But if you look at this particular area, I believe the bulk of it in private ownership is now in C2, in which almost all of the uses are permitted outright now. There are some site reviews. Ms. McKinney can explain, there are some nuances, but I believe the process used added actually several uses to, and made them conditional uses, so you probably have a net increase in due process, so that people can hear about a project, comment, you'll have the opportunity to mitigate impacts. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll start out by just saying I want to thank everyone, the neighbors, the University of Oregon businesses that have all been involved in this conversation. I guess if anybody can show us how to do it, I think probably Fairmont can, so here we go. I know that I speak for all of us, and you've seen this demonstrated in many things we've been trying to do in the community. We have a deep concern for protecting our neighborhoods, and we are learning about how to preserve our neighborhoods and to do the kind of engagement that you've been talking about, and lessons learned are going to serve us all. So I see this as really helpful for a lot of the things that are ahead of us, and I just want to express my appreciation and our appreciation for all this hard work that you've all put in. Thank you very, very much. Councilor Zelenka.
I wanted to thank you all for coming out tonight and giving excellent testimony. Job well done. Now all my neighbors know where I am on Mondays. I was kind of sad that Susie didn't get to finish what she was going to say. I'm sure it was going to be brilliant, but I was wondering if I could get one of those three-minute things for home. No?
That is so rude.
I wanted to commend the Fairmount Neighborhood Association, the UVO, the Chamber, and the city staff for an incredible job well done. Everybody collaborated on this process, and everybody did an amazing job, and special recognition goes to Lydia McKinney for a really excellent job. The thing that's important about this for councilors is that this is an experiment on two fundamental new planning ideas or concepts that, as Al Cooper said, aren't necessarily new to the world, but they are new to Eugene. And one is this mixed-use center, this is our first one that we're doing, and the form-based code, this is the first time we're employing it, and so we need to get this right here and make sure that it comes off well, and that we have processes that check back so that we could make sure that it gets done correctly, because it's coming to all of your wards as well, and it merits close attention for councilors to make sure that we get it right here, because it's going to get replicated every place else.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone for coming down. I've just got a couple of questions. On page three of the Walnut Use, Mixed-Use, page three, it says there, it's the Walnut Station Mixed-Use Opportunity, and the third bullet point says there is the opportunity to protect the existing Fairmount neighborhood. How would this protect it in the way that the current codes would not protect it, and what it would be protected from?
Well, I think the, first of all, I'm Lydia McKinney from the Eugene Planning Division. I think one of the main emphases we looked at, of course, was the 15th Avenue Transition Edge, and the existing zoning is C2, community, commercial, or PL, public land for the most part on that edge. And that allows 120 feet in height, there are no setbacks for that, and a broad range of commercial uses permitted. So the way that we looked at protecting that neighborhood was to look at, rather than having that abrupt edge between commercial development and single-family residential development, we tried to look at what are the impacts, the things that make developments more compatible with the neighborhood, and that's when we started looking at things like building stepbacks. So we have buildings now, instead of having 120-foot height limit along that 15th Street Edge, there's actually a three-story height limit, and then it steps up to five stories, and then seven stories. I think that's a significant way that we've addressed compatibility. We've also increased the design standards for the buildings along that edge, whereas, you know, residential, commercial, multifamily buildings would all have to meet the same design standards for that area, which isn't true in the current code.
Okay, so it's mainly along 15th Street, then, is the area that's talking about protecting?
Yes, that's where we focus on that.
Yeah, well, this is kind of like, yeah, this is kind of like the infill compatibility standards that were adopted for, you know, West University and South University for SUNA. Okay, then my next question, and last one, is just down from that, it says there are currently two high-density mixed-use buildings in the building permit stage. Just out of curiosity, what are they and where are they?
Well, one of them is the one that was mentioned by one of the neighbors this evening, and that's the multifamily building that actually does have commercial on the first floor, that's behind the Market of Choice, adjacent to the Cowell Building.
Oh, courtside? Courtside apartment?
Courtside apartments, right. That does have some commercial on the first floor, that's obviously under construction now. The other one is there's a building on the corner of 15th and Orchard that's being permitted, has not been constructed. That's a six-story building that has residential on the upper stories and also commercial on the first floor.
On the first floor, okay, great. Thank you.
Counselor Poling.
Thank you. I've got just a couple of questions also, but first I'd like to commend all the people that have been involved in this and this diktativeness that they've showed over the years. Reading the emails that we have received, it seems like that there are a lot of people that are, I guess the way that one person put it, it's not perfect, but it's as close as we're going to get, and it's a good example of a collaborative effort. And the information we have is almost 100 pages, and these may be something in here, and I just couldn't find it. The first question I have is, what is the approximate total length of the proposed multiway boulevard going to be? Do we know that?
Well, I can tell you that the multiway boulevard, the full length of the multiway boulevard on the north side of the street is between Orchard Street and Onyx Street. And, so I don't know what the linear feed is, I'm looking at Rob to see if he does. Right, Walnut Street to Onyx Street on the...
Walnut, Onyx, on the north side.
On the north side, and then it's Walnut to Villard on the south side, so there's actually the multiway boulevard on the south side of the street is just on these two blocks. So we only have a proposal for the local access lane on two blocks on the south side, but it does extend all the way, like I said, to Walnut to Onyx on the north.
Okay, so in reality, if you look at the total length of Franklin Boulevard, it's not really going to be that much of a change to Franklin Boulevard.
Not the entire length, that's right.
And then the other question I have is, what was the reasoning behind changing the appeal process of the decision, of the planning director's decision, from the hearings official to the planning commission?
That started out as something that came up at one of the conversations that we had with the neighborhood, and so that was actually a recommendation that came out of one of those neighborhood meetings, was a request for that, and we thought that that would be something to explore, and we discussed that at the stakeholders group. As someone mentioned, this was something that came up towards the end of the process. What happened was, originally, we were under the impression that it had more support from the stakeholders than actually, once we put it into writing, we heard back from the Chamber and from the University of Oregon, who said, "Oh, we weren't quite clear what it was you were proposing, and we don't support that." They wanted us to maintain what our current process is, which is a hearings official appeal. So we did discuss that at the planning commission, and one of the, one of the ideas that the planning commission had was because it's a new project, a new type of a code, and they've had some familiarity with it, they thought that they might be the right body to consider those appeals, and so that's why they were interested in maintaining the planning commission as a review body.
I guess this is one area that I'm going to disagree. I'd recommend not changing that. You know, we have hearings official that is trained and skilled for hearings, hearing appeals. The hearings official's been doing this for some time, is skilled at it, and, you know, if it's not broke, don't fix it. So I'm going to recommend that we not do that. I don't know if that's going to get any backing or any support, but that'd be my recommendation. Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations to Lydia McKinney, and congratulations to everybody else, the neighborhood groups, the Chamber, and all who've worked so hard for so long to try and find something that everybody can move forward with and that will help our community grow in a comfortable way. I heard a couple of concerns from neighbors regarding parking. This is a fairly understandable thing when you're talking about this level of density. To take off on what Counselor Zelenka said about the idea that this is step one, and there are other similar centers designated for other parts of town, I guess my question is one around process, or it's not so much a question as a recommendation. You've done a wonderful job with this process, but with those in the future, we do a lot of work when we're planning for a change of zone or some manner of land use action to look at impacts in a systemic sort of way, in a process-oriented sort of way. And I'm not certain that we, as a city, have the right process in place for looking at parking impacts. As we get more dense and we're doing more of the work we're doing with comprehensive lands planning and the Envision Eugene process, I think this is going to be an area where we can potentially run into conflicts. We saw it in the 19th and Alder area, where we were waiting until the specific project got put forward, and then suddenly, we could see how it was going to look on the ground, and everybody went, "Well, wait a minute now, we didn't really mean that." So I'd like us to do a better job up front as a system, as a process, of being wise about parking impacts and what they're likely to see with the planning that we're doing. Thank you.
So with that, I, before we close out this evening's work, and thank you again, I just want to say how much I particularly appreciated the comments made by Mr. Recker, the comments about gracious transition and the continuing need for narratives that match what is said and what is done. So I appreciated that a lot, and I'm going to bear that in mind. Thank you all so much for coming tonight, and with that, we're going to...
Mayor, there was a request to keep the record open, so you should either not...
Yes, sure.
Move to keep the record open for 10 days.
Second.
If we can be clear, that would be...
July 1st.
July 1st at 5 o'clock.
All right.
That was the intent.
All right, July 1st. All right. All right, please vote on that. Seven in favor, none in opposition. We'll keep the record open, and with that, we'll say again, thank you, and end this evening's work.